Good evening, everyone. The Honorable President of the Congress is here to present the following. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in a visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's April 4th, 2017, time is 7:00 PM. The regular meeting of Greensboro Common Council is called order. At this time, we're requesting all cell phones, pagers, and any other electronic devices beside us, please. Roll call vote, please, Jim.
Daryl.
Here.
Er.
Here.
Down.
Here.
Down.
Here.
... Michigan. The approved minutes from March 4th, 2017, regular meeting on a special joint meeting on March 24th, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections? I move the amendment through.
Second.
Discussion. The number of roll call votes, please, Jim.
Daryl.
All stand up, it's not a one meetings.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
First item on the agenda, old business, new bar, restored preservation. The order is 2011 dash three.
Good evening. We're back in this evening regarding restored preservation ordinance and the adoption of the store downtown district. Obviously, we've been here twice before for two readings. I don't want to get or go over everything we've gone over before. Just to let you know that we did hold our regular monthly meeting last week, last Wednesday of the month. I believe we had nine individuals from the community there, two city councilmen, and the mayor, and two property owners were all that showed up for that meeting. At this time, I feel that we've done our due diligence in trying to educate the public and work with them on this process, and we're here to ask you this evening for an approval of the downtown district. With that, I will open up the questions room.
I'll start right out if I may, please. I've talked to Jamie, and he's kind of surprised. I'd like to try to raise your gas another time, and he never got away with it. They had these in Grand Rapids, Michigan, tonight. And I just called the phone with him, and his opinion was that he supports restored preservation. But he is in, says downtown, and he would appreciate if the restored preservation would consider tabling it until next month, and he could be there to vote. He said that the west side square is the most district he would like to represent. He said it was a tired issue. He understood, but all possible he'd like to take with him.
Well, I feel that a member of the council wishes to be here and was unable to do so, then we would be happy to postpone this and allow him to be here and voice his support and cast his vote for members of his district and himself.
And that has to be determined by the council to table or not. I think all discussion is necessary here tonight.
I personally find table, you don't tell me.
Yes. Since he's...
On file, will it?
Yeah. That will be fine. Motion on that?
Yes, I made it.
All right. Her is making motion. Thank you.
Any more discussion? The number of roll call votes, please, Jim.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next item on the agenda, we were thinking about a medical last month. It's orders 2011 dash eight, err, nine, amendment 2011 salary ordinance, second reading. And what this is in reference to is the majority of the labor employees from per salary from utilities in the city picking the evidence entirely of the city. Last month, it passed on the first reading.
I move to pass it on the second reading.
Vote for this as 2011 dash eight, err, nine.
Yes. Eight and nine.
A second.
Any more discussion? The number of roll call votes, please, Jim.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Then I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and regulations for third reading.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Jim.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
Make motion to vote for the third reading.
So move.
Second.
More discussion? The number of roll call votes, please, Jim.
Er.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
Okay, now takes care of the third reading. Those two are passed. Thank you very much, counsel. Next item on the agenda, Street Commissioner Mark Klafter Camper, orders 2011 dash 10, public nuisances and non-kept properties. The first reading was passed last month. It's basically on grass cutting and any other nuisances with those residences.
Anything Jamie did from last time?
Uh, I think council had, well, certainly Jamie had concerns. He wanted to go from a five day to a 10 day notice. He also wanted a letter sent by regular mail at the same time of proposing this place upon the property. And the ordinance is very sensitive.
Mark, we talked at one point about maybe the red mail. Does that help you more?
No, it can't do it.
Okay.
Mainly because the post office will hold it about seven days and make three attempts.
Okay.
So if they make an attempt, they hold it seven days, they make an attempt, they hold another seven days, then they forward it back to us, which ends up being over three weeks.
They did say, it's the same thing with certified as in this measure.
We talked about the little, I don't know, it's about 60 cents to get the little thing that verifies that it was made. You can fill it out, they say 80 cent, whatever it is, mail stamp it, complete it with the date and the address and who's from.
That's what I, I guess that's what I thought it was.
It's not called sort of a, but...
No registry, that's what I thought.
It's a delivery, yeah. It's a mailing confirmation log unit.
And tell you, proof I think Jamie had second thoughts about that 10 days because when grass gets nine inches high and you send out the letter, and you've got 10 days there and maybe a couple more days, the post office is trying to get the people to sign, take them back to residences. Now it's 13 days, and we get notified, and it takes us two, three, or four days to get it and cut it. So now you've got two, two and a half more weeks involved, and grass is already nine, was nine inches tall prior. And it makes a lot more time consuming for that grass to be cut and taken there. So I think the 10 days is a gift.
Move the pass ordinance 2011 dash 10, second reading.
More discussion? The number of roll call votes, please, Jim.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
Pass. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, Greensboro School Board appointment. As our current school board members, the term expires on June 30th of this year. Helen, I know you've been working on this and the rest of the data.
Uh, we had, we see three applications, resumes. One of them, and they have been sent a letter, they live out in the county. I think it's people, it's a little misleading. They think because their children go to Greensboro schools, they can vote for a city appointment. And they have, are in Washington Township, Washington Township has two, so that's where they would be. This is, they must live in the city, and this was in our ad that we put in the paper. So we had two that apply. And Dave Wyble asked to be reappointed to the school board, and the other one was a Newton chaplain, for which I think everybody should have both of their resumes in your packets. And after looking at them, I would just nominate that Dave Wyble continue with another four years. They can serve, as the new rules are, they can serve an eight-year term, and then they must stay off, and then they can come back. So he would have another four years, and I would nominate him for a second term.
Second, then.
Two good candidates. More discussion? The number of roll call votes, please, Jim.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Wyble. Thank you for serving. Next item on the agenda, Gary Murray, Lincoln Street update.
Really quick. On the east side of town, part of it's closed, and they're still working on it. Enough? Okay.
You can't get through best possible.
Oh, I said part of it's closed.
I didn't like it the first time I heard it, so.
That portion will remain closed until about May 1st, as they construct that portion in its entirety. And then they will continue, and they will also be constructing from Montgomery Road north to Fourth Street on the west side from now through May 1st. Then they'll hit the west side, the portion between First and Montgomery through, or in June, because they only have time for the school buses to be done. And once they get that done, then they will work on the east half from First Street up to Fifth Street. We did have a good progress meeting last Thursday with the contract, and Endot was there. All requests for time extensions so far have been denied by Endot. They do recognize that they are owed some time, but Endot said that any submissions that they've done have not met their requirements for requesting an extension. So they were told to formalize their latest request, and the longest request that the Seaboard District can grant is 100 days. Other than that, it has to go to such a office in Indianapolis. And if there are a lot more strict on requirements, you're not going to make any shortcuts.
And two of the tip board members are here, and from what you were told last Wednesday night, and Kim, Daryl, you got Gary's information.
Yeah, you guys just got an email, but because I promised to update them since we had our meeting last week and then had a progress meeting the next day, and I was just going to update them more tonight.
So there is an end to the...
There is, there is an end. Right now, they plan on having Lincoln Street done from curb to curb, from the south end to the north end, running on binder by July 1st. So you'll only be using the western two lanes in July while they finish to take that third lane to do concrete sidewalks and driveway bridges on the east side. So...
I hope they can put a little more stone or something in when you turn off Montgomery Road onto Lincoln Street.
And you can stay off other people's property and drive on the road.
Or act a company curb and driving behind it.
Yeah, they're going over into that left.
Going into Ross Davis's property.
Well, they're going in, instead of doing that, they're avoiding that step, and they're going over into the left lane and trying to get around to make that.
Into the southbound lane?
Yes.
Another request, Helen, if O'Meara's been taught to ask, but how soon can they remove those bushes in front of the wood shop?
They probably won't be, well, according to what they told us, they won't be in that area until after school buses and the school buses.
You reckon if we, now what's going to happen there at the move place? Are they going to just set those bushes back? Because right now, the people come up there and look to the north, and they can't see the traffic coming.
I have not looked at the landscape plan. I can get it, but I don't believe there's a whole lot of landscaping going at that corner, just due to the side triangle distance.
Kim, can you look in there?
Sure.
Marcy, up those bushes, because I had trouble with the place, they can't see there looking to the north.
On the west side of Montgomery, like, couldn't get that four way, but it's going to be a four way over there. I wonder if they're planning on working on that end. Is it going to be the same time they're working on the west end, or?
It's going to be the same time that they work on that area between First and Montgomery.
But all the east half of...
The elderly four will court, will go for a court at one point, then they'll do the east half. And they're trying to hold off Montgomery Road's rules out there.
Just, yeah, just a thought, sidewalk is going to go all the way down here in front of Ross's.
Yes.
So if they put the sidewalk in there, they're going to have to remove the bushes back. And right now, as the mayor pointed out, I mean, it's safety issue right now. Part of the problem is because the two lanes you're turning onto McDonald Lincoln are so tight that to make that, you end up going into your lane to make that turn, and that's really what, and you can't see it because it's right over there. I mean, we tried to put some stone back there, but we really don't want to encourage people driving on...
No.
... property if we can help it. But if we can get that bush moved back, at least you can have a sight there. And we're going to have to move it sooner or later. I... We can see, it wouldn't take long with those backos out there to get one or two of those out. Thank you. You're welcome. You know? Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is tax benefits. We have GCOM renewals and the Hampton Inn renewal. And the committee and I have reviewed them and determined that they are in compliance. We have three new S B one forms from Valio, new resolutions 2011 dash six, seven, and eight. And are there any questions on this, counsel? Do you want to go? Do you want to, I mean, Helen, go?
No. The ones from GCOM, the renewals are basically about one year. I think one of them is three, the others are zero, so you can add all this year, so they're just about a minute, so.
Valio was adding new lines, adding new people, so.
So I believe we could hold on these three new resolutions and renewals at the same time.
All right. Yeah. Unless somebody...
Unless somebody... I would entertain a motion to approve the renewals on the GCOM renewals and the GS logic of the Hampton Inn, and the three new Valio resolutions in 2011 dash six, seven, and eight.
All those resolutions, how, for how long are those?
Those are...
Isn't it, is that equipment?
Yes, they're equipment, so they're five years.
Five years?
They're all five years.
Nine years?
Yes.
And that's personal credit.
And we'll get these completed and as soon as approved, Jim, get them to you.
I immediately accept the recommendation of the Department of Board and go ahead and pass the GS logic to the GCOM, I don't know, resolutions 2001 six, 2001 seven, 2001 eight.
And the, and so do tax benefits.
Yes.
Second.
More discussion? The number of roll call votes, Jim.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes. Helen. Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next item on the agenda, Street Commissioner Klafter Camper, orders 2011 dash seven, revised emergency snow routes.
You should have a copy of this post order that's in front of you. This has not been updated since the city annexed a substantial amount of property on the project. There's been some annexation on Milhouson Road. Traffic Committee met on this. We had several different proposals submitted. We reviewed them all. Helen attended all of those meetings, I believe. There were two small sections of roads that were some blocked or done, and we eliminated those. One of our major concerns was, when you get to this level of snow emergency, we'd have to call one. There's only a certain amount of miles that we can physically clean, and we didn't feel like, we had Washington Street on Yol, and that was just one block of State Road Court Six. And with the state of Indiana, the manpower and resources they got there, we were going to have Main Street in a better shape than what we could possibly accomplish with severe snow. So we didn't feel that it would work widely happening on there. And that was a long distance of a wide width, and that was eliminated. They were trying to be placed strategically. We tried to not concentrate in one area. We tried to get emergency vehicles access within two or three blocks of any residential area, and still hold the amount of road down to the level where it would be manageable and feasible, try to clean it off in a 48-hour period.
Is snow emergency routes always hitting first priority?
Correct.
Can you have any surface side street with snow emergency route?
Hmm? No idea.
We're not claiming that's going to be passed.
All right, we all went to council this time.
In the way.
Counsel, any questions? The traffic committees want to do this, right?
Yes, we moved over and felt that, as Mark said, we eliminated few, but tried to get them so they were centrally located and still get out of the D V.
Make motion to pass orders 2011 dash seven.
We have had three reads of the strike ten.
Correct.
I'll say.
Discussion. Roll call votes, Jim.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to suspend the rules regulations.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jim.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Entertain a motion to suspend the rules regulations.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jim.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
Entertain a motion for second reading.
So move. Second.
Discussion. The number of roll call votes, Jim.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to suspend the rules regulations.
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote, Jim.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Helen. Yes.
Entertain a motion for second reading.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. The number of roll call votes, Jim.
Er.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Helen.
Yes.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to suspend the rules regulations. The third reading.
So move.
There's no odds.
All right, so I can...
As long as there's some money involved.
Yeah. You're okay.
Yes.
I made a motion. Second.
More discussion? The number of roll call votes, Jim.
Er.
Yes.
Daryl.
Yes.
Daryl. Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Third reading. That's the, the third reading. Entertain a motion for the third reading.
So move.
Discussion. The number of roll call votes, Jim.
Daryl.
Yes.
Er.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And then you can now update. Herb Hunter, Plan Commission report.
It's amazing how quickly we do this agenda with buffers playing a part.
Are we doing well?
We're trying to go through best.
No overtime.
No. I think everybody got in their pack, reporting to Plan Commission to the City Council. Kathy, we have a map, or we don't need one.
Well, the second...
That looks it.
I can go get a map.
I don't think...
The second, I'll only read the first page, and my cellphone, Tim, can explain the graph that's attached to it.
Do you need a block approval?
It basically indicates that we did the site plan that's going to prove that, and the rest is for the annexation, which next month...
Would we have that?
Okay. I think, I think the way it's set up, Herb, is that next month, next month's council meeting, you'll have your fiscal plan, where there'll be a resolution requesting adoption of that fiscal plan, and I think Kathy's given, you've given cottons that, so you've digested between now and then, and then that will also be the first reading for the requested annexation.
All right.
And I'll email all of you a site plan showing you that area that we're talking about.
We did meet, the regular meeting of Plan Commission, and we did approve both the plot plan and the recommendation for annexation by the city for the new school, the St. Mary's building, out on Milhouson Road there. And there was a small area that was in county property, just kind of to clean it up, we recommended that get the annex to the city. So we don't need any action on this, then, Jim?
No, I think, I think they'll lose the notices, they have to go out to the...
Probably.
Right.
And so basically, as we both, we, Plan Commission voted to recommend annexation and approval. As I reported.
Does that, does that tie up, by the way, to the, I'm pretty sure I know where we're going, but does that kind of tie up to the rest of the city property there, and there is space in between it?
It'll all be city property, won't it, Kathy?
What is, what will all be city property, though?
The area with the school there, I think.
Right. Yeah, it's already in the city limits.
Yeah, there was only a small section.
Over by the farmhouse, is that...
Well, what, no, what we're annexing is the rest of the roadway, which is out by 421, and if we stay here, that way the whole roadway will be within the city limits.
This will be addressed next month's meeting. Correct, ten, correct. Is there anything else in the audience?
Kathy, you want to bring up the traffic committee's...
Oh, what do we do?
Kathy, that's...
Um, Captain Girlby, I tried to pass it, but she declined. We met, and we had two items. And the first item was a parking issue at the corner of 10 and Franklin Street. There seems to be a lot of vehicle parking along Franklin Street. The neighbors were complaining that, I don't know, blocks, when they're turning onto Franklin Street off of 10, especially in the evening times, hard to see the parked vehicles. I telephoned the owner of the dwelling, which is Bill McKimper, and told him the situation. He has since talked with the tenant, the resident, said he would take care of the parking issues. If there is anything, any other overnight parking, or his friends or buddies want to hang out, there are more walking cars in his, in his parking lot. The next item was petition for a four-way stop at Franklin and Hendrix. And we asked Stacy if she could pull some accident reports up for us to see how many have been there, and that we take it under advisement.
Just, there's an increased traffic on Franklin with the portion of Lincoln shut down, so we were wondering if we really wanted, people are seeing more traffic, so we wanted to give it a six-month period, as long as Lincoln opens back up and we evaluate that for us.
Give it a temporary site while Lincoln shuts down?
You could, but you couldn't force anything by, you could just see, you know, do a study, have someone sit out there and see. You could, but you can enforce it, but we could just see, you know, do a study, have someone sit out there and see.
If we get a resolution passed, we can, when Lincoln's back open again.
I would hope so. Thank you.
Anything else, council? I do have a question before we kick out a term. I received a, a monthly report from directions nine more. This kind of report, I would expect from somebody who worked in the red work. This is a supervised report. It's done daily. Everything that lady had done looks like it had been recorded. Do you expect this kind of report monthly? I mean, it has everything in here.
When we granted them their funds, did you say that we'd like to see this report for the next, I forget how many months, so many months? And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I thought.
We like to have the same point.
I don't think we indicated how detailed we're going to have.
It's detailed, isn't it?
Yeah, it may not, it does need to be quite that detailed, but we need to have, because we had indicated, because we had some concern.
I agree.
Yeah, I think our concern at the time was that they, they had a shakeup and wanted to make sure that they were...
You can tell her's been personal for him.
Yeah.
It is chosen. Anything else, council?
Mayor, I have an issue I want to bring to the council.
Yes, Chief State, Christine.
This is Amy Burton, and she's contacted me about some synthetic stimulants that some of the kids are using in town. We've had an influx. I don't know if everybody saw the newspaper article, but we've had an influx of emergency room visits from the kids that are using the bath salts. That's normally sold at some of the convenience stores. And she wanted to address the council as far as, she has a personal family member that's been adversely affected by this. And she's wanting to see if the council could take into consideration a...
Sure, we're, please come forward.
Thank you. I won't thank much of the time. First, I would like you to see a picture. This is a little boy. His name is Evan Carter. My name is Amy Burton, so it's Evan's grandmom. He is five months old, and my oldest son Nigel is a drug addict. He worked at STI and everything that he made this year, a thousand dollars a week, five thousand dollars of his tax money, a thousand dollars if not more from his girlfriend, and three hundred dollars from my grandson Evan. And four weeks went at his nose of the bath salts that he bought at the marathon station. He, the mar, the bath salts that we're talking about, they call it ivory way, that's had different name, this feeling when I know of. It, when you have the effect, you get very paranoid. He thinks the FBI was in his house. He had knives, and when we went to pack her stuff to get them away for safety reasons, not because of drugs, he had them, the knives, I think we counted sixty, out of the front room, his bedroom, under the baby's bed, because he thought the children were in his house. The ghosts were in his house. He was sleeping two hours deep. I don't know whom I sent them. I tried to give him help. We took him to the emergency room here in town, and they won't help. He can't get help. He won't go. He took off. My grandson has nothing. It'll take years to recuperate everything that this one bath salt here in town is that, to my family. Not alone, all the other kids here in town that think that this is cool. It's a ba, it's not a bath salt. Amwayhigh.com, A-M-I-high.com sells this. Twenty dollars a pop. Marathon Station sells it for forty dollars. They blow back. They told me, when I called them, I called the police station, I called Mitch Daniels, I called everything. I emailed this company. Of course, I'm not going to hear back. It says it's a bath salt cocaine. It's thirty times worth than meth, amphetamine, but we have enough problems within this county and cocaine that we don't need. And this is legal. It cannot be legal. Our kids are going to die. We got my grandson out of this house because him and his girl, his mommy, who's nineteen years old, was scared to walk down the hallway at night because my son would kill them. He would have stabbed them. We have kids that are in this emergency room. When we went, they told us that there are kids in this town that are odious. When they're shooting it up, they're squirting it, they're smoking it. I don't know. I just can't see how one thing, they, Marathon told me it was none of my business, but they sold it. They're sold it. My son told me when he came to my house to try to dry out for a few days, that they told him, Nigel, man, you're going to keep watching. So can cash. I don't want it on my record if you use your eighth hand card. I need help. This little boy, my grandson Evan, needs your help to stop this in here in county before somebody really gets hurt. These kids in the school, it's all over their Facebooks. I made one because I wanted to see. I am horrified at some of the children in this town. And to see the crap on their Facebook, knowing that my grandson has lost his dad. Your kids, I see your names. I know that your kids go to Greensburg High School. I have two teenagers there. When your kids are, if I find out that there's a party, I call the police. I have no problem. And I would put a stop to it. I have a teenage daughter who thinks this is the most awesome thing because it's her older brother, till now. And she doesn't know her. It needs to stop. It needs to stop here. I need your help.
Mrs. Burton, we understand, and we want to help. The K2 spice, the county has launched on it, which includes the city of Greensburg as well.
You can still buy it at Air Force.
I, I know, not the K2, but you, they're not supposed to be.
Yes, you can.
The K2 spice, they, but they went and...
Yes, you can. Every time you go in there and you can it out, it takes them a day to get it back in.
Every time we go in there, they don't, they don't have it. When we go in, they don't have it, but, but I'm hearing rumors that they're selling it when we're not around.
Then we know what to do with that, about that, right?
This store needs to be shut down. Those people need to be held accountable for what they're doing.
Okay, the state, I don't know where they're at on passing it, but we're all, I know there was a bill. Do you know Stacy where they're at on the?
I'm sorry?
The state house representative?
No, it's still, it's still on the, on the agenda, but I don't know if they'll get to it or not with all the, you know, they know they're behind it.
Going to the bath salt. There's nothing been introduced on that, correct? As far as being a drug yet?
I know Kentucky is illegal, and I think there are a few other states that have emergency, and there are representatives who think it's illegal in their state. But Indiana, who has such a problem with Democratic and Republicans not getting along, that a lot of these things are put aside over pettiness. I have a problem with that, you know, there's some things over pettiness that come first, and drugs here in this camp in this state are rampant, and even put, and now they're legal.
Can you call the state representative and...
I called Mitch Daniels, and I haven't heard back from him.
Check your state representative and senator first. They will respond. And I'm sure they will give you their ear.
I'm not just looking out for Ed, and I'm looking out for your great kids. I know some of them are violent. I'm looking out for some of their money. I'm looking out for, this is bad. I don't want to see, I don't want to go through, you know, teenage funeral, though we're overdosing on this stuff.
Stacy, you know or not, if they're, they're discussing it as a drug yet?
They're discussing the synthetic stimulants as a whole. I don't know specifically if they're talking about the white light, you know, the ivory way, or even like that.
You know, I'll go ask them myself. I'll go ask them myself, or I'll go with you.
I'm with you. So, because the Marathon Station here, they have the center of markets, that's what they told them.
It is, until the laws are passed. What they can do is ask.
But I know if you take forty dollars, they're going to go find you whatever you got.
If I take forty dollars in there, can I ask you how much water to put in it so I take meth? I mean, what is the ratio?
No, it's about the size of, like, a minute.
It's a bath salt. Shouldn't be able to put your water?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how kids, even in their head, they, you know, get high off the tablet. I just don't understand, but it's a new thing.
I sympathize with you. The sooner the better that something like this is taken care of. I don't know if you can make laws against everything in the world that somebody may decide that they could use in their system. I don't know. You know, I read the article in the newspaper. I appreciate that stuff. So we can all look at it. I thought with the article you expected it to proceed. It's done more.
Unfortunately, the places that do sell the escape is not discriminated. They don't care if you're twelve, they don't care for thirteen, they don't care for fifteen. And that's serious, because these kids are running around in this town at night. And have you prepared if one of your kids were in a car, or you, or any of us here, and they wouldn't know?
Let me talk to my partner, and I'll talk with, speaking Stacy, and see what we can do, start, you know, and Stacy has your phone number. We will be in contact. You're welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I love it, Stacy.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Seven minutes.
Sir, along the same lines, just add some validity to what she added. In a one weekend period, there were six individuals transported to the hospital having these effects. So I don't know if there had been a party or what there was, but there were six different people in one weekend that were having...
And it was for the first...
Yes.
And that was, that was the, that was the reason the article was put in the newspaper, was because of that weekend. That many people at ER, or young people at ER with those issues, and it was confirmed that that's what it was.
It's a shame that we, we sympathize with you and the people in this situation. Like I said, we will get back with you. Is there anything else in the audience? I'm entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Adjourn, thank you.